We'll call the January 3, 2012, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, we'll ask Ms. Renee Griffith if she'll deliver our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be together and we thank you for the country that we have been so blessed to live in. And while our country is still suffering economy, from the economy, Lord, we just pray that you give us wisdom tonight as we make decisions that will lead and direct in a wise manner. We thank you for our servicemen and women that are serving and pray that you protect them and bring them home safely. We again thank you for the blessings that you've given us and ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments of the agenda from the staff this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's one item I'd like to add under closed session, and it's an attorney-client issue, and that would be under General Statute 143-318 dot 11A 3. That's the only adjustment that I have.
And that was for what reason? I'm sorry.
Attorney-client.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Any adjustments to the agenda come from any member of the board? If not, I move that we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to appointments before the board. We have a presentation by Mr. Brian Duncan, I Care Incorporated Executive Director regarding the annual community services block grant application. Mr. Duncan, if you'd come forth, please, sir.
Good evening. You have in your packet our application for the community services block grant program. We were before you back in March, not quite a year, but our application is due a little earlier this year. It's due in Raleigh on February the 15th. So it's required that the Board of Commissioners have 30 days to review it, make comment. And so we made sure to get it to you in a timely manner. I don't have much in the way of a presentation as you've had the materials. I do want to make myself available to answer any questions. Prior to that, though, I would like to say the CSBG program more or less runs on a three-year cycle. So every three years, we have to create this plan that we determine best fits Iredale County in terms of addressing poverty issues. So back on December the 6th, we invited public officials, community members, just several people, state legislators, several people from throughout the community to a community needs forum. Had about 42 people to come. Thought it was a great turnout. And that helped kind of create the foundation for this program design, which you're seeing here tonight. Went through a very deliberate process in determining what our needs were here in the community to address some of the issues that are causing poverty in our area. Some of the things that we learned, and I guess the best way of putting it, already knew, are things that we can't necessarily fix. But there are some things in the way of employment supports that we can do, and those are the things that we have been doing over the last several years. The plan this year does not vary a whole lot in, as it compares to the last three-year plan. What I would like to emphasize, and you don't have this in your packet, is our outcomes for the last year, I thought were outstanding, given this economy. We actually were able to move 20 families out of poverty. And that's, I think that's very good with all that we're facing out here. The average change in income was over $10,000. Thirteen people actually gained full-time employment. Six of those had medical benefits. Average wage rate was $9.63 per hour. And we actually helped seven participants to secure standard housing. Eighteen individuals were provided emergency assistance. And 24 of our participants completed education and training programs. So that kind of falls in line with what our plans are for the upcoming year in terms of being able to help families move along and address some of the issues that they're facing. A lot of the things regarding employment are beyond our control, but our emphasis to our families is that they take advantage of training opportunities. And hopefully, when this economy turns around, that there'll be jobs that they'll be better prepared for. So with that said, I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Duncan?
Is your funding the same as last year? Has it decreased?
It has decreased.
It has what?
Last year was $179,776. This year, it's $168, what over $168,000.
Where did you guys cut to make up for that lack of funding?
Travel and staff won't get raises. That's, we cut the fat, you know.
Any other questions of Mr. Duncan?
I have one more. What do you, do you anticipate next year that you'll have the same less? What are you anticipating for the next year?
Honestly, I just don't know. I looked at the congressional budget that was just released. Of course, it has not, I don't think it's been approved, but I anticipate it being the same, probably around $168,000 again. So it's just hard, it's hard to tell, you know.
I wouldn't worry, though, on the federal budget to be approved. We hadn't had one in three years.
Yeah. Right now, yeah, it's on continuing resolution.
Any other questions? Okay. My understanding, no action is needed. This is just submitted for our review for a period of 30 days. Is that right?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir.
These are all North, state or North Carolina funds? There's no?
These are federal funds passed through the state of North Carolina.
Passed through?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but we're just approving it from North Carolina.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This time, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of the release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville from Stonegate Developers LLC, with the owners being David B. and Eileen H. Reynus. Location, 1.796 acre parcel between Broali School Road and Swift Arrow Drive in Mooresville, North Carolina. Mr. Roskowski?
And bear with me. The computer actually appears to have frozen up, so in light of a presentation here, what you have before you, as I described at your last meeting, is a request of release of jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. The property is approximately 1.8 acres. It's located off of Broali School Road, next to Broali Middle School. What is being proposed is a 1,400-square-foot drive-through or drive-up grocery store. And I described for you at your last meeting a little bit about that concept, but I just wanted to remind you that you're not actually approving that specific development tonight. You're approving or considering the approval of release of the zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville so that the developer can begin working with the city on their development plans prior to the planned annexation of this property, which will be considered by the town of Mooresville in June of this year. And the property owners have requested and have been granted an extension of water and sewer from the town of Mooresville, thus the annexation request coming in June of 2012. And I'll pause for any questions you may have of me.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Roskowski?
Am I reading this correctly, that this is already going to be annexed in June?
It's not a given, but it will be considered. I would assume that, given that the town of Mooresville has already granted the water and sewer extension, it's a matter of, they only consider annexations once a year in June each year. So it's more of a delay than anything else.
Any other questions? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we, that we release zoning for this parcel to the town of Mooresville.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion?
Well, should we not have asked any opposition to it before?
I believe you're right, Mr. Mitchell, and I apologize. Is anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? All right, hearing none. Now I declare the public hearing closed. Is your motion still valid, Mr. Robertson?
Amazingly, it is.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the first three memos, 3, 4, and 5, over to Ben Garrison. These are all requests from him.
Good evening. Now, the first item is to call for a public hearing on January the 17th on our proposed FY13 Community Transportation Program Grant Application. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow citizens to give input into that grant process. The application is due on January the 27th. This year, our funding requests are $260,000 administrative, of which 80% is federal, 5% is state, and 15% is local. The local share, we do obtain that through mileage surcharges. On the capital grant, we're requesting $265,404. That's 80% federal, 10% state, and 10% local. And again, we, we get the mileage surcharge, or get the local match through mileage surcharges. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Garrison?
Just out of curiosity, is our revenue stream from those fees holding, holding pretty well this year?
Yes, sir. We get fees and fares through a lot of our service. Some of this comes through contract revenue. When we develop our budget, we do a fully allocated cost, and we build into our shared service mile the amount that we need to collect in order to draw down this local match.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we call for a public hearing for this request on the capital grant application.
Okay. Motion to call for a public hearing from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is to call for a public hearing on January the 17th on a proposed FY13 FTA Section 5310 elderly and disabled grant. And again, it's to require, the requirement is to give citizens the opportunity to have input. The period of performance on this grant would be from July 1st of 2012 through June 30th of 2014. So it is a two-year grant. Again, the deadline is January the 27th. What prompted this grant was I met with some of the folks with the kidney dialysis organization, and they rely heavily on United Way funding, which has been down this year. So the purpose of this grant is to assist with kidney dialysis transportation. What we're asking for, proposing, is $100,000, of which some of that will come from the fares for service, but also we will use our state rural operating assistance monies through the elderly and disabled program, as well as some of the kidney dialysis organization contract revenues. We can use those as local match for the grant. So be happy to answer any questions.
Can you refresh my memory? Didn't we have to step in and plug the gap one year?
Yeah, one year we did.
To keep this from happening.
Well, that was a question I was going to ask, to be quite honest. One year, we plugged the gap for them. The next year, they came back in, wanted money in the budget, and we told them, wouldn't put it in the budget, but if they came to us and the request was reasonable, we would fund it. But they never came to us. So I'm assuming, Mr. Garrison, you foresee some difficulty in these folks in the future and you're trying to adopt or create a program that's going to address that in advance?
So this is new?
This is new. We already have one 5310 grant, which has plugged some of the gaps, but what's happening is with the numbers of folks needing to go to dialysis and with their, the funding being limited or being decreased through United Way, this will plug more gaps in that, in that service, so.
Understand that. Let me phrase my question a different way. This is, this is the initiation of a new program, but is it, is it additional funds that you receive and we're having to match? Or is this a modification of what you've done in the past to address this need? Does that make sense?
This is, this is a new funding request.
Okay. Okay. But you feel you can meet your obligation with the existing revenue stream that you have?
Well, it is a two-year, it's a two-year period, so
Okay.
we will, we will use our rope monies, as well as the contract revenues. We're allowed to use those as the, as the local match.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
Do you transport five days a week or seven days a week for the kidney dialysis?
Actually, right now, it's six days a week.
Six days? Do they do it on Sundays, too?
No, sir.
I'm thinking some people had to have it every day, but maybe they don't.
Most people are on a, on a three-day. They go Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday.
Okay.
What we've had to do, like over the holidays, though, we've had to modify so that we have employees working on holidays to cover dialysis.
Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to call for a public hearing on January 17th.
Okay. Motion to grant the request for a public hearing on January 17th by Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last is to call for a public hearing on January the 17th for a job access reverse commuting grant. Again, it's to allow citizens to have input. The period of performance on this grant would be July 1st, 2012, through June 30th of 2014. And the deadline on this grant is, again, January 27th. The proposed purpose of this grant is to provide employment transportation to lower-income citizens within Iredale County. This is actually a new grant, but it continues a grant that we have had since 2006. So every, every two years, we've been able to renew it to continue providing the, the service. The funding request is $200,000, of which 50% is local and 50% is federal, and we use our state general public dollars and employment dollars to match that. Plus, we, we use the fares to lower the net.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Garrison? Hearing none. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval for the call for a public hearing on January 17th for the proposed grant.
Okay. Motion on, from Mr. Mitchell, a call for a public hearing on January 17th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The last administrative matter is a request for approval of the December 20th, 2011 minutes.
Floor is open for a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commission. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have one announcement. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations. Hearing none. I move we table this appointment to our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Judicial Crime Prevention Program Committee, we have one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, move that we postpone it. Unless it's tomorrow. Well, can we appoint Deborah Brown?
I appoint Judge Deborah Brown.
You'll nominate Judge Brown?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell nominates Judge Deborah Brown or any other nominations? Hearing none. I move we close the floor to nominations. Appoint Judge Brown by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I apologize, but I, I still don't have a nominee for the Felsky's Task Force. I thought I would this evening. Does anyone else have a nominee?
If you'd like for me to get another one, I can.
Don't you try to do that, because I thought I've had it.
Okay.
I'm thinking I'm, I'm down to my third one. If you come across someone, just call me.
I will.
We'll, I move we postpone that appointment to our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Under a reminder list, we do have a couple applicants for the Mooresville Planning Board, ETJ, if someone cares to make a nomination there. If not, we can, someone wants to give these folks a call, we can wait till our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not.
Go ahead.
I was going to nominate Mark Brady.
Okay. How many vacancies do we have?
One.
One? Okay. Mark Brady, you said? Okay. Mr. Robertson nominates Mark Brady. Any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations. Appoint Mr. Brady by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. Any public comment, period? Oh, Mr. Grub, I'd get him back out of here at 8 o'clock. I think I'm going to do that. I would like to make one comment, since I'm still a member of the public. Folks, for the third year in a row, the United States came in second in initial stock options offerings to the public. First time in history, three years in a row. And every year, one of those three years, we were surpassed by Hong Kong. Capital pursues freedom anywhere you go. When you tax capital too much, it's a coward. It goes somewhere else. Capital creates employers. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Okay. Any new business? County managers report.
Two things, and they're related. You have two handouts that, one's in front of you, and that's the proposed agenda for our budget work session on Friday. I admit, there's a lot on this agenda, but I've, I'm hoping that it moves fairly quickly. And I think we've prepared a good bit of information to, that will hopefully help that happen. And the second item that I have is, Gene has passed it around and it's going around, is our proposed 2012, 2013 budget calendar. You've seen it before, but I think there was some confusion on a couple of the dates. And as it stands now, we have the winter planning session scheduled for February 24th and 25th. And that was based on a conversation. Ms. Robertson, at the time, couldn't make the proposed date that we had, which was, I think, in March. So if that's a good date for everyone, we'll keep it. If it's not, we can look for another one. Most of the dates, after you get past April 2nd, are variable. So we can, we have some flexibility. The ones that I would put stars by are the June 5th and June 19th. Are, when we get down to, you know, crunch time in June, as you know, the public hearing and the budget adoption are, they obviously have to be done by the end of June. And if any, and if you want to talk more about this on Friday, when we're talking strictly budget, then we can bring this up, too.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do you have a conflict? I have a conflict, yes.
Okay.
The, we're meeting, the commissioners meeting the 7th and the 21st, right?
Of February.
February.
Yes.
And then I'm going to be gone the rest of that week and all of the following week.
The week of the 21st?
Yeah. I'm, I will not be available from the 22nd until Monday, the 5th. I haven't been on vacation in 10 years. My wife's taken me on one.
Your wife says you're going to take one, didn't you?
Okay. We'll probably just send out some alternative dates and see what we can figure out.
We can talk, we can talk about it, Frank.
March 9th and 10th.
Must be good for us.
No? Yeah, that's in April.
I'm good anytime, rest of the year.
I'm good anytime. I just need advance notice. I mean, I can.
Could we do it the week prior, maybe? Week in prior?
No.
No. That's not good.
I think that that was the original. March 2nd was the original. If March 9th is good for everyone, I think that that'd be, that doesn't push us too far out. I think we're, that's still realistic. Hopefully, what, some of the work we do on Friday, this coming Friday, will help us to not be crunched at that point.
Everybody good now? March 9th, you're good? Okay. Mr. Smith, let me ask you one question about Friday. You say projections, are you and Ms. Blumanstein going to give us a projection of what you think our fund balance will be at the end of this budget year?
We haven't gotten into, Susan's been working on, on the financial part of this, and I expect to get it tomorrow by noon. I would anticipate that we would have that information, to the best of our ability.
If she's got any level of comfort, I'd appreciate that, because when I, I'm just speaking personally. When I approached the budget last year, I had a target number for the fund balance at the end of this year. And I, I just, let's take our pulse and see if I can begin to sleep a little easier at night. at night.
Okay.
I'd appreciate that. Okay? Thank you, sir. Okay. County managers report. At this time, I make a motion, we go into closed session under general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, a three, attorney-client privilege. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
There'll be no action as a result for our closed session, but we'll continue this meeting to our planning session until this Friday, January 6, 2012 at 8:00 a.m. at the Lake Norman State Park Community Building in Troutman, North Carolina. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? No she carries unanimously. They got you a map in here.
Have they?
Yeah. Or a direction. You can get some directions. You can, or you can go down east Monmouth.
Yeah.
Do you have a chief?
Hmm?
Do you have a chief?
Yep.